Copies من المخططات للاجتماع tonight هو متوفر في الباب إلى الغرفة. إضافيًا، مخططات والتعويضات من الاجتماعات السابقة موجودة على موقع الشبكة城市. will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and conferred by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant Carl Al-Wardman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet at the door. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Ms. Arndt, here's your role felt is.
Mr. Abkhedian.
Here.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Faison. Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crant.
Here.
Ms. Cooper. Mr. Zanzika.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
Laura Present. The next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda or amend? So move.
I'll second.
Mr. Zanzika, second by Mr. Crant.
Ms. Cruz.
I abstain.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crant.
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Abkhedian.
Yes.
Agenda item number three is approval of the minutes of the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll do it.
Mr. Abkhedian, support. Mr. Tagle.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crant.
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Abkhedian.
Yes.
Ms. Cruz.
Oh, I abstain. I could approve the agenda, but I need to abstain from the minutes.
We got that.
Yeah, you knew what I meant.
I knew that.
You knew what I meant.
I trusted our secretary.
Ah, you recognize.
I can make that change if you want.
She's gonna fire us all.
Agenda item number four is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the number five zoning board of appeals report. Mr. Zanzika.
Yes, thank you. We had a meeting on September twentieth. There were two hearings. One was a variance request from Thomas Lenninger of Vance Builders at nineteen forty-one French Creek. It was, the people, request was in order to construct a roof patio closure without walls at six-foot variance was required to maintain and move with a forty-five-foot rear yard setback. And that was approved. We had no objections from the residents and it did very nicely done and the architecture fit in well with the, with the residents and the surrounding neighborhood. The second item was a variance request by Kent Keith A. N. Lee at two one one six Brinstone, variance to allow in addition to a non-conforming pool deck. The addition has already been built, constructed, excuse me. The pool is non-conforming because it is located in the front yard. And that was a little more difficult situation. We did have several problems from the neighbors. Aesthetically, the pool was in poor condition and it was built, ironically, the home existed before the subdivision was built and it was, at that time, it wasn't necessarily the front yard because it was built on a corner. And so there were a lot of circumstances that was difficult for us to deny the request. But the other hand, we felt it was an opportunity for the, for the homeowner to improve the site and to make it more appealing to the neighbors. So it, we postponed it for a month and they're gonna work with the, the staff in order to come up with some better building materials and, and painting and so forth to make it more aesthetic. So I thought it was a, a good opportunity for a win-win at this location. So that, that pretty much was the, the essence of the meeting.
I'm just curious, was it an above-ground pool?
Above-ground pool. Yes, I'm sorry.
Is that a corner lot that it was the front yard because it was a corner lot?
Yes. And it was built, the pool was built before, the home was there before the subdivision was developed and there weren't any roads in other than a gravel road and it was developed after the home was there and the pool was there. So it, it made it a, a front yard and a corner lot. And what was the distance from the pool to the sidewalk? Do you remember? Like, three feet I think. In fact, they moved the sidewalk around the pool because it didn't, it didn't.
An above-ground pool.
Above-ground pool. And they, and they used building materials like fiberglass building materials for the wall around the pool and, and they were faded and it just, it was a nightmare. It needs to be some work and I think with some work with the billing department and with, you know, with Paul and the, that they can make it a little more aesthetic.
I happened to watch that meeting. By the way, the ZDA meetings are now broadcast live too.
Don't fall asleep. I'm sure you'll fall asleep.
Watched that one, especially the last case, that was kind of interesting. Okay, next is number six, DDA report.
DDE report, there has not been a downtown developer authority meeting since our last report.
Okay.
However, this is an opportunity to report on the status of the civic center's site design.
Good.
There was a steering committee meeting that some of you were involved with at the community center a couple of months ago. We looked at some options, broke, broke up into focus groups, talked, made suggestions, came back with some recommendations and some ideas. Remember this?
I think we discussed that at the last.
We did, we did. Some, just bring.
Some of them didn't hear.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a good idea.
But there's, there's updates from that as well.
Oh, good. Great.
So, so that's the, we got input from, from the steering committee, which will no longer be meeting. And with that information, Robert Gibbs and his team went back to the, to the drawing board and tweaked the designs. Came up with a couple more options that we looked at, some members of staff and, and the consultant discussed and looked at and apparently they've come back with, I haven't seen it yet, but they've come back with one, one concept. And on October twenty-fourth, there's a joint city council and planning commission meeting. It'll be in this room. I believe it'll be in this room. Stay tuned, we'll figure to nail that down. But the, the intent of that meeting will be just to discuss that concept and the status of this, this site, so stay tuned for that. Just a reminder, we have a meeting on October eleventh. Then we have the joint meeting on the twenty-fourth. We do not have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, the fourth Tuesday, but we do have a meeting on November first. So the schedule's a little wonky because of that joint meeting.
Okay. So I'm a little behind because I missed the last two. And I missed the steering committee meeting. Did he ever send out a questionnaire to the steering committee members about what their thoughts were with respect to the meeting? I think it was the second meeting, the second meeting maybe, or the first meeting of the steering committee, there was talk about sending out a questionnaire. And so that's my first question. And my second question is, the design concept that's going to be presented on the October joint meeting, how was that decided upon or determined?
The first question, I saw some, one of the steering committee members shaking his head. Was there a questionnaire that was?
I was under.
Yeah. And then the sec, to answer your second question, that was, that was decided upon based on input from the steering committee and the internal design team, which is comprised of staff members and the consultant.
And so this was the majority of steering committee and staff member votes for this is what we think is best?
I don't know if it's that scientific. I think, I think the, the input from the steering committee was considered and by, by the, by the internal team and, and they made, they came up with the best design given all the input and given, given the limitations and the strengths of the site.
So it was not a democracy or a democratic kind of vote, but the steering committee made a recommendation to be considered?
I wouldn't say that, no. I would say that the steering committee broke up into three or four, four different groups and each of the four groups made some suggestions, some recommendations, had some ideas, and those were kind of put on a master list and considered by the, the design team, which was comprised of staff and the consultant. It wasn't as scientific as, as a show of hands, what, do we like this better, do we like that better? It was more of a.
But each group did, it was a whole group.
So do you have, do you have an idea then of what is, what we're going to look at in, at the end of October?
Nope.
No.
So did, I, I'm sorry, did I overhear you saying that steering committee will never meet again?
I think that was announced at the meeting, the steering committee meeting.
I didn't hear that.
It wasn't?
I thought this was a five-year master plan.
Yeah, I, I may have misspoke, let me clarify that.
Any other questions?
So I missed one meeting, one meeting.
No, there was actually, there was actually two. There was two.
I think you missed two.
I'll, I'll, I'll clarify that.
Okay.
Let me clarify.
And I don't know if they do summaries of those meetings. I don't know if Maggie does summaries of those or not, like minutes or anything.
I'll find out.
Okay.
What were the dates again for the meetings? Could you repeat them? We have a regular meeting on the eleventh. I'll clear. Eleventh.
Twenty-fourth is the joint meeting. The month meeting on the twenty-fifth, November the first.
Thank you.
Is it, is there a meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay. Let's, number seven is the planning and zoning report.
Planning and zoning report. The McClure Street conditional rezoning, we have not had a meeting since the last planning commission meeting because we're awaiting the, on the applicant to submit revised plans, to submit traffic study, and to host a neighborhood meeting with, with residents in the area. That has not happened yet, so until we get, we'll see three things happen, we, we're not gonna meet. The, there's some projects that are coming down the line. One is a public hearing on October eleventh for the IHOP project that's coming back. They, they listen to input from the planning commission, from staff, so it'll be, it'll be tweaked. We'll see that. And the other project we'll be seeing is Fidelity, Fidelity Investment, which is the first outlot for the eighty-eight Big Beaver redevelopment. That's, at this, at this time, it's the intent that they get on the agenda.
Okay.
October first.
For the October eleventh. Yeah, so a couple of interesting projects that are coming up.
On the twenty-fourth is a joint meeting.
Joint meeting.
It's gonna be on the civic campus.
Yes. No meeting on the twenty-fifth and there'll be a regular meeting November first. Well, we'll send an email to remind everyone.
Okay, okay. Mr. Tagle.
Have you had any conversation with the McClure team as to what are the changes they're contemplating?
Not yet.
Have they indicated they're coming back?
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess then we're ready for.
One, one other quick question, sorry. So is it, is it city facilities, would that be part of the DDA? It improves to the campus here? Let me look it up. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna jump on the computer during the meeting.
I think if there was, Alec Turlick was there at the steering committee meeting, so I think they're part of the.
Is, is your question, were there members of the DDA or would it be? Part of the DDA. Or would it be a TIF or would there be any, have they considered any type of tax instrument financing for the, for the improvements? I think the intent is for it to be in the DDA. Have they looked into a TIF? They're looking at all different options for, looking at.
Well, the other important thing is it's intended to be revenue or cost neutral to the taxpayers.
Right.
If we don't do that, then there's a problem.
Well, that's why I'm sugge, curious if they're gonna make it a TIF, tech, tax increment financing, so they, maybe that doesn't apply, there's no taxes. They'll present a pro forma that, that talks about the revenue generating potential of the site. Yeah. They'll talk about, you know, different uses and different potential and there'll be that type of discussion at the joint meeting. That would make it revenue neutral if you could generate revenue, obviously.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we're ready for agenda number eight, zoning ordinance text amendment, public hearing, zoning ordinance text amendment, file number ZODA two four nine, cluster option. Do I open the hearing now or do this?
We're gonna do a brief presentation, then you can, then you can open the public hearing. So we've, we've talked about this a great deal. We've had numerous meetings of the planning commission, we had a joint meeting with city council. This is, this is not new to anyone. This is gonna be some repetitiveness, but we felt that it was in the interest of informing the public and, and being transparent that this is a public hearing and there will be some in attendance and some watching on TV, so we thought it was only appropriate to have a brief presentation. So with that being said, and in the spirit of partnership, because this is a partnership that we have with our, with our consultant, we're gonna tag-team the presentation, so you get to hear both of us make this presentation. Is that exciting?
We're gonna do it twice, he'll do it first.
Well, the meeting wouldn't be complete. I'd rather that some tag-team worked. So I don't want it all legal on you.
So this is the public hearing for the enhanced cluster ordinance, which, which we, which is what we've referred to during this process. So for those watching at home or in the audience who don't know what a cluster development is, it's, it's a zoning concept and it involves grouping homes within a development so that the remaining land on the site can be preserved for recreation, common open space, or protection of natural features. And go back to the first slide. Development on the left is what we, we used to see a lot of in the city, which is basically go in and, and clear cut or close to clear cut, bust a road down the middle of it or, or, you know, max out the layout, put as many units as you can with, with basically disregard for natural features. And on the right is what we kind of aspire to, which is something that's more thoughtful. It's laid out in such a way to preserve features such as open space and wetlands. And this is what we're trying to encourage, but we'll get into this real quickly. So again, this is a, this is an example of, of conventional on the left and, and cluster on the right. We have the same, the yield of the same number of units, but with significantly more open space preserved with the cluster option that I just talked about. The advantages are preservation of natural features. It permits more creativity in, in the design. It preserves character of the area and it reduces infrastructure costs. Instead of having to put a road here for four hundred and fifty feet, as an example, you can put a road in for only three hundred feet with as many units. So your, your costs for water, sewer, road, sidewalk are less, the same yield. We have an existing cluster ordinance. We've only had one developer that took advantage of it and what we hear from all the developers is that the benefits of clustering are not offset by the restrictions. There's still too many restrictions and it doesn't make it economically viable and attractive in any way. So we received consistent direction from planning commission and from city council on this ordinance. And there's, there's three consistent themes. One is removing unnecessary barriers to, to doing cluster development. Two is providing incentives where they made sense. And three is permitting design flexibility and creativity. And now Ben's gonna go into a little bit more detail on these.
Don't we have like high fives whenever you take?
Yeah!
So as, as Director Simon alluded to, we really worked off those three directions from council and from the planning commission. The first was to eliminate unnecessary provisions. So in existing ordinance, there's the, the maximum or the requirement, the minimum requirement that you have thirty percent open space. So we reduced that minimum to twenty percent. In addition, we eliminated the density bonus requirements that were in the ordinance, such as a sustainable design project, primer open space cluster of a hundred and fifty feet, or a donation of land for community benefit. We found those to be significant barriers that developers said they couldn't overcome. Relation to design flexibility, we are maintaining the existing setbacks that were already in the cluster, which is a front yard of twenty feet, a rear yard of twenty-five feet, and a side yard of seven and a half feet. I do wanna state that, that Mr. Crant brought an issue up to my attention prior to the meeting that there's a, there's a, in the front yard section, there's a statement that says that it has to, the garage door has to be twenty-five feet. The reason for that is you wanna be able to park a car in front of your garage. The house itself can be twenty feet, but the garage door itself has to be twenty-five feet. That's for either a side-loaded garage or a garage at setback five feet from the front building line. But the front building itself can be up to twenty feet from the front line. But these are the, these are the, the requires setbacks, but we have a provision that allows the city council to waive the setback of provisions, provide the applicant has met creative design or has met specific standards, which are in the ordinance. This was a, a topic that we spent a lot of time talking about with base density. So similar to how it is now, the base density is determined through a parallel plan, which you have to design and plan to meet all the underlying requirements of that zoning district. If all those requirements are met, the base density can automatically be increased by twenty percent. So just by doing cluster and getting to twenty percent open space, you get an automatic twenty percent density bonus. On top of that bonus, there is a variable density bonus that may be allowed by the city council. We also spent a lot of time talking about this extra density bonus. After a long discussion, it was determined that we're not gonna put a cap on the density bonus. You can, if you can meet all the requirements and fit it on the property, you can get as many units as, as, as approved by the city council. So there's no maximum density bonus above the base number of units. And there's three options or three ways to get additional units. The first is through open space, the second is housing diversity options, and the third is through sustainable design. So for open space, for every ten percent of additional open space above the minimum required amount, a ten percent bonus density shall be applied. So you're automatically required to do twenty percent open space just to get into the cluster programming. So if you do an extra ten percent, so thirty percent, you get a thirty percent density bonus and it, it ramps up as you provide more open space. The second option for density bonus is a housing diversity option. So this is a one-for-one bonus for diversity if the houses, houses that you're providing have a minimum square footage of fifteen hundred.
Maximum.
I'm sorry, maximum size of fifteen hundred and at least one for one first floor bedroom. I wanna just let the planning commission know that there was some questions about how this was determined and the language was not very clear in the last draft you saw. So we tried to clarify that language so that it's a little more clear in the ordinance in regards to how this actually applies. And the third is through a sustainable design. This allows up to a ten percent unit bonus provided for a development that utilizes sustainable design best practices such as green building, lead, natural stormwater, stormwater, et cetera. And this bonus is, is, is more on the discretionary side of the city council. If they deem that the provided best practice meets bonuses, then they can, can grant that up to ten percent. Another discussion that the planning commission had was, you know, the goal is to increase housing options, housing diversity, preserve more open space, do more design best practices. But we're in relation to that, we have to reward the development committee by giving them extra units and bonus. So one way to do that would be through two family dwellings. These are attached products, the other name you hear of these are duplexes. So we are going to allow duplexes and cluster in all the R1 zoning districts, provided that the, that the site front, site itself has frontage and access from, from a major or minor arterial and that all the peripheral setback requirements are met. So they still have to meet the rear yard, basically rear yard setbacks for the zoning district, which they're under. In regards to process, all proposed cluster developments require a public notice and public hearing. So similar to a rezoning or special use, neighbors within three hundred feet get notification of the application and are allowed to come to the planning commission and participate in the public hearing. All the proposed cluster developments are reviewed by the planning commission, who make, who then you make a recommendation to the city council. Final approval is granted through the city council and all the proposed cluster developments must meet the required standards, which are included in the ordinance. So this is a summary. The, the point was to provide greater design flexibility, so we reduce setbacks, we allow for attached housing, and we allow for, or encourage sustainable design. We want to permit greater density. There's automatic twenty percent density bonus. There's three options for additional density and there's no cap on the density. And lastly, we wanna ensure that there's a, a process and protection for single family. So we require a single, a public notice and public hearing and we do, final approval must be made by the city council based on a recommendation from the planning commission. Thank you.
Any questions? I think we've pretty much seen this before. Is the final approval by the city council, is that a public hearing too also or is that a, I think it probably would be.
I think that's the way we handle rezoning, so I think yes. That's not requ, that's actually not a requ- That's not requ, that's actually not a state, state requirement at the council public hearing. They require one of the planning commission public hearing, but we take it a step further for these types of applications.
Any questions? Okay, since this is a, now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Close to public hearing, and bring it back to this planning mission for the, for the discussion or a resolution.
Just, just to help clarify that, I just was kinda penning a little bit of wordsmithing here. And this is on page six of our, of the document, not, not on, not of the agenda. And it's under setback provisions two, it's under E, which is called regulations, and then two setback provisions, and then under number one referring to that garage. I just thought it'd be a little more clear to, to have, instead of just front twenty feet, and then it goes into there shall be at least twenty-five feet between the garage, et cetera. Maybe we can have a sentence that refers to that twenty feet similarly how you define the garage. So, it should, I'm just suggesting it could be, there shall be at least twenty feet from the front property line to the front of the dwelling. And then the next, then the rest of it.
Okay.
And the second sentence?
Yeah, the second sentence, fine. I just wanted to differentiate the two clearly, that's all.
Anyone else?
I just had a comment on section I to I, the sentence, that's on actually page nine of the document. As I read this, I just wanted to share some thoughts, just see if anybody kinda thinks the same way or similarly. It says architectural form, scale, and massing shall ensure buildings are in proportion and complementary to those of adjacent properties and selected building materials are of high durable quality. My first thought was that, I guess if the developer comes in and they're trying to maximize all the bonuses, they're going to increase the density, if they wanna build something green. We might get presented with a project that might not be in proportion to anything that is in the neighborhood. So, if they're, like hypothetically, they're building, the base plan is ten homes that are standard, let's say R1B, eighty-five frontage, and they come back and they say, well, we, we applied all the bonuses and we're, we're up to eighteen homes now, and we're putting them on forty-five foot frontage lots, and all we want is all fifteen hundred square foot colonials with a base floor plan of only seven hundred fifty square feet. Now, we're looking at an actual development that might be all colonials are fifteen hundred square feet with a master on the first floor that only has a footprint of seven hundred fifty square feet to meet all the bonuses, and it might not be in proportion to the neighborhood. So, I'm just reading that, and I'm wondering if it's, if it might be restrictive in that way, that it's saying unless the development somehow complements the neighborhood in design and proportion, then it might not be very, I, I guess it might not be the right project for that location. And then the question after that, it will, then as we had another location, other projects, is where is the right location? You know, so that, that was my thought on that, that sentence there, that if we might get some, some projects that might be quite different, maybe even architecturally, if, if they wanna go green in some ways that we haven't seen up until now.
Yeah, where they could have, it could be theoretically in a neighborhood that's got budding, budding developments that have forty-five hundred square foot homes.
Right.
And they're proposing fifteen hundred square foot homes.
Right.
Even within that neighborhood, there's forty-five hundred square foot homes, and now these are, a third is big, and I, I get your point. So, I would say that you're, it seems like your, your, your issues were with in proportion. Not, not complementary with, but in proportion to.
Right, maybe in proportion, maybe scale or math, maybe a little bit of both, or maybe more, maybe more in proportion, maybe that's part of.
Or incompatible.
Compa, compatible and complementary.
Right. I think those are somewhat generic that could mean many different things. So, you kind, it's kinda left open interpretation, and, and who's gonna interpret what that means when we actually get the project.
And, and just so we're all on the same page, on number two findings, which is A through I, and this is I. The applicant shall demonstrate through the use of cluster option, the developer will achieve a sufficient number of the following objectives. So, it's not like, like a variant standard where you have to meet all the requirements. This is a sufficient number, but your point is well taken. This is a standard, and this is something that, that you, the planning commission or council could, could hang their hat on positively or negatively.
Is the word sufficient too ambiguous though? What's sufficient? I guess I, that's not very specific.
We, we have a similar term in our PUE standards where. Because it's very, very difficult to create standards that are so scientific that you can, you know, one, one size does not fit all. So, instead of in proportion, perhaps complimentary with, no, not complimentary, compatible.
Incomparable.
A complementary. Good input.
Anything else? Mr. Krent.
Under paragraph three, sustainable design, it identifies some options that would be a sustainable practice, and it's, it's more situation, right? It's not, I mean, it's one of the three, or two of the three, or if they wanted, but it's not all three of three.
That's not where you're at, John.
Eight, paragraph H, under density bonus on page seven, if you go to, actually page eight, item number three, sustainable design.
So, change the or to, save the and or?
Agreed.
Okay, with that, are we?
Is there any comment?
Yes.
Could you go back to the very first slide where it showed the, the images of the front, yeah, that, I'm sorry, not the very, that, that one. When we were driving through those five neighborhoods, there was one that was virtually a wall of garage doors. These are not, is there something we can put under, that becomes under the aesthetics, I guess, but obviously, these are very nice looking ones. Is there any way we can say, I don't know, how much square footage on the front can be garage doors? I'm just trying to, I don't have the wording, and I don't wanna throw a giant wrench in this thing, but.
How were those? The ones with the garage, were they more than duplexes though, were they?
I can't remember, I can't remember.
Are they called stub notes or snub notes?
Snout, snout notes.
Snout notes.
The garage door actually fronts in front of the building.
Ours, ours is not, ours has to be back farther, but it's still, it just, you know, these are nice. And, and, you know, obviously garage door in front is, you know, acceptable, but it just seemed like that one, it just was out of the five, that one was just so offensive. It looked like you're going in through a storage unit complex as opposed to a housing. I don't know what we, you could put in there, and you have to have another public hearing, and we, we wordsmith it, but it just, is there anything you have in there now that talks about aesthetics, that we could just say that it falls under that?
Well, we said, go ahead, use the words, the garage door can have to be prominent or dominant in the elevation, for the elevation of the house. And it starts to diminish, it's, it's important, I guess.
And the thing is, also the amount of square footage in the front is, you know, the discrepancy to the house, that the garage doors can only occupy X percentage.
Yeah, that could be a little tougher.
I know. I understand, but you know what I'm saying? Cause we saw that one developed, it seemed like more than fifty percent were garage doors for the house. And I would like the house to be more prominent than the garages.
But this, are part of the I, could we, could we add what's the letter I up above? Where we're talking about the architectural form, scale, and massing? Or just add another sentence there about the garage door shall not be dominant in the facade?
As opposed to percentage?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm trying to my own mind, how would you come up with a percentage, because the bigger the house, or the smaller the house is gonna affect that number, and it's gonna get to a point that I think it may work against us. Whereas if we leave it a little bit looser, we may then have the ability to, to decide, is that a dominant element in the front elevation or two prominent?
I can understand, dominant or, is a good word?
This is a, this is a design challenge, and where, because people want to downsize, but couples especially, they want two cars. And they want a two-car garage. On a narrow site, where you cannot have alleyways, and you cannot, you're really limited in terms of creativity, and you wanna maximize the unit, so when you start doing side loaded garages, that takes up more width, and it, every application is different, so I wouldn't wanna necessarily say no snout notes, no, no front loaded garages. I think there's, on a case-by-case basis, there's a way to get all or some of the units that have front-facing garages. They don't have to look as bad as the first development that we went through. That was a, that was poor design. There, there are ways that a good designer could have designed that, that and not been so.
Oh, yeah, I've seen some garage doors that were gorgeous, I mean, they really look like the entrance of the house.
You know, something as simple as this, they just offsetting that garage a little bit makes a huge difference. You know, especially when you, you add this entry feature here, that, you know, it's prominent, and it, that's just a little, a little trick, and it, and it makes all the difference in the world.
Right, no kind of stair steps you.
Yeah.
Back to the garage.
Well, I just, I throw, sorry to throw it all out there, but I just, I just was so put off by that one particular.
Personally, so I'm on an independent township planning commission. We're getting a lot of empty nester housing, a lot of it. It's all front-dominated garages, all of it, drives me nuts. We don't have any standards for, for saying no, so we try, try to work with them, but it's a challenge, and we're gonna see, we're gonna see some developments where that is a challenge for us. So, I, I appreciate what you're coming from.
Would it be appropriate, then in letter I, just add another sentence? The garage door shall not be the dominant feature on the front facade of the house?
Well, could you use the words, instead of, we changed proportion to, it was complementary and compatible, right? So, if we said that if it's compatible and complementary, could you argue then that if your garage is in the front and dominating the elevation, that it's not complementary or compatible? Maybe?
But I think, yeah, I agree, but I'm thinking that, I think it would be appropriate to at least include garage door.
Oh, I don't disagree, I'm just saying that if we can't, can we hang our hat on complementary and?
Yes, you're right.
Compatible.
Yeah. Mr. Appenhead.
I think if we get into the design aspect of saying, you know, is this garage door dominant or not, then we're kind of treading in the same territory that we do when we ask architects to provide, you know, variety in elevations, and they say, well, they are enough, there, there is enough variety, and we say, no, we want a little bit more, so we're kinda going back and forth, so we might be kind of in the same, we might be having the same discussion, you know, is this garage door dominant or is it not? You know, we might say it is, they might come back and say it's not. So, it might be one of those design questions. I, I just wanted to mention, I think it's worth noting that one of the reasons why, obviously, that the garage door is not dominant, cause that's a single garage door. So, if it would be a, it would seem like if it were to be a double door, that would look very different. So, it, you know, proportionately looks very nice on that elevation.
It's gonna be hard to get two cars in that garage.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm missing a point, but I'm looking at the first paragraph, this is intent. Going down to, that's the first page. Subparagraph six, ensure compatibility of design and use between neighboring property. Now, we're referring to properties outside this proposed cluster, or can we talk about within the cluster in that?
Well, your, your question was, is this referring to neighborhood pro, outside properties outside, it is, it is.
Why can't we also narrow it to within the proposed cluster? Broaden it, I guess.
Mr. Hudson, what page are you on?
First page.
Page one?
Page four, A six. Which says, ensure compatibility of design and use between neighboring property. But properties plural within, without the cluster. Well, that's compatibility of design, we're still talking about having a. We're talking the same thing, but I've been thinking you've got it under the intent.
She might do it, yeah, right.
So, it would say something to the effect of ensure compatibility of design and use within cluster developments and between neighboring properties.
That makes sense, Karen?
Well, I, I guess a question I have, are we, are we going to omit any language about the, the garage door?
Yes.
I'm concerned that we are trying to raise the bar here on quality design in the community. And for so many years, the automobile has been king. And I understand that it's important to a lot of people, but I also don't feel that a garage door should be a dominant or predominant element on the front of the house. It's a house, it's not the garage. I mean, it's a garage, but it's a service, the purpose of the house. So, I, again, I understand what you're saying, but somewhere we have to at least lay some groundwork, so we can have the dialogue with the developer as to, you know, we think this is, you know, a little bit more than what we would like to see as far as it's.
If, if we add the second sentence about the garage not the dominant feature on the front elevation of the house, under second sentence under I, with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That address your concern, Mr. Krent?
Yeah, under I, I get from two standards, it's, it's more of a, we're talking, I just wanna look at it for a second. Yeah, we're talking about under, especially under the finding, we're talking about things like innovative and creative site design. We're talking about design elements here. And I think that's, that's a good place to put a specific thing about the garage door should not be a dominant feature of these homes.
I don't think that would hamstring any good designer at all. I mean, I think it's just, it's one of the parameters you have to design to within.
There's all kinds of different ways to make it less dominant.
Right. It'd be a standard, understand that the planning commission and ultimately city council will review the project under.
Yeah, there's enough flexibility in that broad statement, I think, to.
There's no need to have another public hearing then, if we don't have one.
No.
And you made the numbering changes.
Yeah, there's also, there was a numbering issue on page.
We have, it's thirty-seven.
Start on page five, it should start with one, each be one, so we're gonna clean that up, but.
I thought that's what it meant.
Um, this one, here, it should be one through five, and just start with seven because.
Great comments.
Finally took us longer than I thought.
It's all refitted.
No, this, this is what's really good, you know, I think we all wanna see this really successful, and I think this is.
Yeah, I'm looking at resolution, and we're proposing to recommend it based on the printed proposed zoning. Can we handle it tonight with some additional language as to the comments, or something of the planning commission in addition to?
Print it with revisions discussed tonight or something of that affair, yes.
Okay, someone wanna read the resolution?
I believe that's Mr. Krent.
I'll take a crack at it. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mike.
I mean, you're, you can be doing this.
I know, but.
Where's the resolution? All right, I see it now.
It may resolve that the planning commission hereby recommends to the city council that Article 10 of Chapter 39 of the Code of the City of Troy, which includes enhanced provisions related to the cluster option, be amended as printed on the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment in addition to the comments elicited by the planning commission during this discussion.
Is that okay with you, Julie?
Sounds fine.
Support the.
Mr. Sanzeca?
I second it.
Oh, sorry. Karen.
I seconded it. Can you support, oh, can I not second?
Oh, she's welcome.
Oh, I just need to be done.
She's welcome to be the second.
Doesn't matter.
I'll get a roll book.
All right. I think we're ready for a roll call.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzeca?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Appenheady?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. Great motion times.
It's our first page.
Okay, agenda item number nine is public comment for items on the current agenda. If anyone else wants to speak on the item that is on the current agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move to planning commission comment. It's given to you tonight, Mr. Sanzeca.
Well, thank, I just wanted, I did make a comment about this zoning board, and I do feel it's a very good board, they work very hard, and many of the members on the planning commission have been members of the zoning board. I think it's, it's clear cut, you know, a lot of opinions are met, individuals are affected by the appeals, and I think everyone has done a great job on the zoning board. I know returning has been, she just recently came to the planning commission, but I, I'm sure she can attest to that, that they worked very hard and they had a lot, you know, to the process.
They take their job very seriously.
Oh, yeah, very, it's very interesting, and I'm happy to represent the planning commission.
And we appreciate you representing the planning.
Thank you. The other thing I want to mention was, I mentioned it earlier before the meeting started, but our, the Water Resource Commissioner's Office and our charity, Pure Okla Waters, is sponsoring the Stormwater Summit on October 7th at Lawrence Tech Technological University. It's an all-day thing, I think it starts at nine o'clock, runs till five, we have some concurrent sessions, we'll have speakers from Washington DC, Traverse City, talking about what other communities have been doing for stormwater management, best management practices. And it also, it'd be interesting, there'll be some discussions on the, some current legislation that's being proposed for stormwater utilities, or how to pay for stormwater infrastructure with the communities, there's no way to tax for that now. So I think, I forwarded the information to Kathy, and I'm sure I've asked her to forward, it's like, the cost is $20, I think it covers the lunch, and then like a snack in the morning, and there'll be a lot of exhibitors there, and most of the cost is provided by the exhibitors. So there's a lot of sponsors. So I think if anyone has an opportunity to go, I think it'd be well worth it, and to see what the state of the art of stormwater management is today.
Do we get credits for that?
I know you can see, see credits, I don't know about planning credits, but I know for engineers.
Probably CEUs or something.
Yeah, right. Professional development credits, I know for engineers.
We'll look forward to it, and I thank you for bringing this to us, Phil, appreciate it. Mr. Tagel?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
Good to be back. Feeling rusty, but good to be back.
Mr. Appenheady?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
No comment.
And I go too. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.